Good evening, everyone. Thank you for joining us. We are honored this evening to have some special guests with us. Those are members of Girl Scout Troop 24248. And they were here earlier. I've been meeting with them. Mr. Peppers were meeting with them. They are working on their earning their democracy badge. So we're happy to have them here in City Hall. And they are going to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance tonight as part of their their badge earning responsibilities. So if you would please stand and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance and remain standing for the invocation. Ladies?
A pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Wonderful job. Thank you. Thank you for joining us today. Mr. Johnson, would you give us the invocation, please?
Let's pray. Father, we thank you for today. We thank you for life. We thank you for waking up this morning. And God, we get another chance to do it again. God, I say a special prayer for the Canton community and the entire country, God, as we go through changes. But God, our word tells us, your word tells us to be bold. And Timothy, you described that we should pray for our leaders. So Father, I'd like to say a special prayer for all of our leaders. The leaders in this building, the leaders in our state, the leaders in this country. We lift you up and give you praise in Jesus' name. Amen.
I'd like to call to order our November 7th, 2024 council meeting. Again, thank you all for attending. Thanks to our special Girl Scout guests. I think they're off to dinner, so. Lucky them. And I'd like to begin with a consideration to approval for tonight's agenda. Are there any changes or revisions?
Mr. Mayor, we had a request from the applicant to remove item new business C. Discussion and approval of road closures and parade in downtown Canton.
Okay. We'll remove new business item C. Any additional changes or modifications?
Motion to approve the agenda as amended. Second?
We have a motion, a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. All members voted for the motion. We have another guest with us this evening, and he is here for the presentation of the citizen survey, and it's Mr. Ron Gally, CEO of On Point Insights. Mr. Gally, welcome. Look forward to hearing from you.
Hello, mayor and council. I'm grateful to be able to present to you today the results of the citizen survey that we did. We worked with Mr. Peppers and his team. And in May of earlier this year, for about for four weeks, we executed a study. I'm going to present the results of that to you now. I presume some of you can see it on your on your calendar, on your laptops, and also up here. So I will advance. This is. Have you received the dashboard that you can go through as well? Have any of you received that yet? So we're not going to do a dashboard right now. We're just going to be using a PowerPoint of the pages that are in there. And I added a couple of things for clarification, but we'll just walk through the results today. So we went out to 1,253 residents. Actually, a few more answered that. There were some people who lived outside of the city and had no connection with the But in general, we got we had a really good response rate, 1,253, and most of them came from email. I do want to mention that we did it in English and in Spanish so that we could get a good Spanish representation of those who were willing to take it and wanted to take it, but needed Spanish. We had our strongest representation in Ward 1 with a lot of people there. Of course, your boundary, your population's a little higher in that in that group, and so we got a lot there. And in Ward 2 and Ward 3, we had quite a few. And there are there were a fair number who lived outside, but they worked inside the city, who participated and took the survey. So that makes up our group. When you're in the dashboard, by the way, you can click and say, oh, I'd like to see everybody in Ward 3, or I would like to see who's in outside of the city and and they you know what their ratings were. Very easy to do. I will tell you that people who live live outs elsewhere and are rating the city gave slightly higher ratings. Not much higher, but a little bit higher than if they are inside the city. We got a good balance of people by age, very balanced, old and young, and a very good balance of male, female. So usually, we have a few more females responding than males. Usually, it's 60/40. Men are just, you know, men. But but you know, this in Georgia, you do really well. And and also, most of them have no children, although although 38% do have children in various age groups. And we did get, in this case, a dominant white population. Now, we always find that people in minority populations respond in a little lower ratings. It's just always the case, and it's very difficult, and we need to do extra efforts to get them in. But I did do an analysis all the way through, and you know, there was no difference in how they rated the city based on race. Skin color wasn't one of the affecting attributes. But we can look at it by the different age groups. It's very easy. And so the ratings are about the same throughout. And it seems that the things they care about. When we do our next survey, I think we'll do some things to enhance that and work to what we can do to enhance that group because they are underrepresented. And by the way, if you have any questions, feel free, and I'll entertain them along the First, we wanted to find out how they feel about the direction of the city. Are we going the right direction or the wrong direction? Have things improved, or have they gotten worse in their opinion? How do we compare to other cities that are here? And as you can see, most a lot of people feel that things have improved here. And a lot of people feel we're going the right direction. And even if they say we've stayed the same, most of them think we're going the right direction. Like because they've gotten worse, it only goes up by a little bit of wrong direction. So if they say say that things are have stayed the same, they generally are saying, but we're still going the right direction. And so it's generally very positive. And then compared to other cities, and they're just thinking about what how are we compared to those surrounding us? Very positive. You do have some who think it's worse, but not very many, you know, for so for the most part, very strong ratings that way. We do find that area 1 is more likely, or Ward 1, is more likely to say that we're maybe headed the wrong direction. So that ward needs a little bit more love and affection, it seems, than the others. You may want to think about that. But in general, they're doing pretty good. If they live elsewhere, as I mentioned, they're pretty positive. We asked people just after, like, how do you feel about the city? We asked an open-ended question. And we said, what are two or three positive things that you like about Canton? And there were well over 1,000, there were 1,100 responses from people about what they liked. And these are the ones that really resonated. The small-town charm, recreation that's here, the events that you put on, the restaurants and dining, the shopping, and the safety. Now, let me comment on that because it is really common in cities that I've done across the country for them not to mention the small-town charm. Like, that's a really high thing. It is very common for them not ever to mention the events that are put on. So whatever you're doing to create that community feel, it's working here in ways that it doesn't quite work in other areas so much. There it's it's rare for me to have someone as a positive talk about the restaurants and dining. Usually, that's on the negative side, and they say, we need more, whatever, right? Not on the positive side. So some things that you are doing are really quite good, and 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 they're very positive about that. And so you'll see that these things don't rise up as being problem areas, and they are in other cities where they talk about those things. And your safety is really good, too. Concerns are all about growth and traffic, you know? So those are the concern. Now, you know that. In other people, it's this and restaurants and you know, and a lot of things. But in yours, it's pretty focused on the growth and the traffic and the roads, but also that how do we preserve the small-town feel that we love here? And that's a major issue. And one of the questions, I'm glad we asked it in the survey, and we won't get to it until near the end, it's like, what do we do to preserve that small-city feel? What do we need to do? And so this will be something for you to think about. It's like, okay, so if we can if we can address, and I know addressing the traffic is going to be like, how in the world do we do that? Because it's a lot of it's not even in your control, they're county roads or whatever. But it's something, if you can think on those things, and if you can manage your housing growth, at least in a way, then maybe the way that you preserve the small-town feel will become your future. Like, that'll make all the difference in in how they feel about you for the future. Okay, so those were the comment questions. They just kind of told us what was on the top of their mind. What do they like? What are the areas for improvement? The next question that we did, we went through a series of five areas. What are the city facilities and events that are important to you? And we just asked them, how important were a variety of things? And then we had them rate them if it was important to them. So we went through city facilities, city benefits, growth and development, safety and security, and one at a time, 50 attributes, 10 on each page, and we had them write them. And here's the first one, city amenities. So we went through city amenities. We first asked, what's most important? Then, if it was important, how well are we doing? And so what's most important? Well, some people said the roll-off site. 4% said that at the very bottom. But most people talked about the parks and open spaces and the trail system being important to them. And they talked about the city events and the city cleanup events. Now, your ratings, like, of the important things, you're doing really well as far as city amenities go. And there are some people who feel maybe we could do some more with the city cleanup events. Essentially, they want to. It wasn't that there was a problem with them. But they they rated these things, and like, this is a real, like, super positive. The things that are important, you're doing really well. Some of the things that are less important to people, or the majority of the people, areas for improvement. And so you don't have to do anything with those, or you could. But you just know their order of priority here. We also asked them about city benefits. Now, these city benefits are not, these are not things that cities are usually responsible for, but they're things that citizens care about a great deal. And so there are things like the small-city feel, as we mentioned, a great place to raise children and quality restaurants. And those are your most important ones, and you're doing pretty well on the important ones. There are diverse housing options, which some people care a great deal about, not as many do, but some people, it's a big deal for them. And usually, that just had to be, I can't afford it, right? That's what they were kind of saying. Or job availabilities, well, I have to travel outside of the area for my work. So those were the things, but to to fewer people. We asked about growth and development. Here's where things that are important are not rated so high, right? So important things, ensuring there's roads and streets can support the growth, making sure the growth is wisely managed, and that we have a ensure our historic historic downtown area is is really well done. It is kind of interesting to see that your public streets can support the growth. I mean, this is an issue of the more we put into it, let's make sure that we can handle it, right? This is just making sure that we're ahead of the game rather than following it. And so just wanted to share that with you. And then the downtown area, I've never seen a city where the downtown area was, it's usually important. I've never seen it so positive. So what you guys have done to your downtown area, like, kudos, you know, a very good thing there. I'm going to continue on. Safety and security, what's important? Traffic congestion management. Usually, we don't include this one in the safety and security section. We did in your city after a discussion, and we thought it was here. If we do the survey again, maybe we don't put this in here, but the traffic congestion management is a really important issue for for how we do that. But also pedestrian safety, that's a strong number 2, right? And and what about the pedestrian safety? And I was reading the comments around sidewalks and trails, there's quite a few in here, and they have some practical suggestions for for areas where pedestrian safety ought to be looked at a little more carefully. So we can do that later on, and I can work with your team to think that through. But also crime prevention, it's really rare that they said crime is getting out of control. It was more of a, let's make sure crime does not get out of control, right? It was more proactive and wanting to keep the safety and security of this city intact. So a call out to the importance of your police. Operational, these are things that normally, it's just the maintenance, ongoing things other than minimizing property taxes for city services. I probably wouldn't put this in in the future. It's a fine topic. You now know, everybody feels it's a very important thing. And they're they're a little less happy with it, but then, aren't we all about taxes? So I'm going to just say that, you know, that comes up where you would probably expect it to be. And I think it's more a keep an eye on it so that we can always be as prudent and thoughtful about our taxes as possible. And they want you to do that. But they also want to maintain the parks, but you're doing great to maintain the community appearance, and you're doing pretty good, you know, you're they're feeling good about that. But also maintaining and expanding the streets, an area for improvement. So in my view, you just can't take your eye off the streets. Now, after we asked these five sections that I just did, the facilities or the amenities, the benefits, the growth of development, the safety, security, and the city operations, after we asked those five on the left, we wanted to prioritize overall. So we showed them the two that they picked from each one, 10 items, and we said, here are the 10 items you picked. What four are most important? What four are most important to you? So everybody out of 50 attributes picked their hot top four, and what you see on the left are the accumulation of everybody's top four. What that allows us to do is sort them all in order, and on this page, I'm showing only the top 20 of 50. So there's 30 more below this that didn't cut the list as being the top most important ones to the majority of people. So everything on this list are in your top 20. And anything in the top 15 is practical for you to really, I would say, keep an eye on always. Either because it's important and you're doing great, or it's important and there's room to improve, in their view. So this is really important. So the top 10 concerns are managing the traffic, managing the growth, making sure the streets can support the growth, and assuring that their taxes are well-spent and thoughtfully used. And then the top areas where they're doing really great are, well, you're doing great on small-city feel, and they don't want to lose that. It's a great place to raise children, the quality restaurants are doing great, and the historic downtown you're doing great on. And these are some of the top, I would say 10, coming down to about 12, are the things maybe to keep an eye on. Now, if this feels intuitive of you, it probably is because these are the things. But they're very fundamental, I would say, to keep an eye on, and you do make sure want to make sure you don't lose track of the fundamentals always in place and being carefully discharged against, right? Keep your eye on the fundamentals, and then you're going to have a happier group. I'm going to go on. A lot of we asked if they had experience working with city departments in the last six months, and a lot of people did. It was about 60% had contact with city departments. And then here, we see the number of people that rated each department, and if they rated it, how they're doing. Now, let me just say this. I've had in almost, I've done a lot of cities, and your negatives are very, very small compared to what other, even your lowest-rated department is better than most people's, right? So you're you're running a great operation. Some are just a little bit more happy than others. But in general, there are very few negatives. And and the mayor and city council, you're doing great. I like this is among the highest I've ever seen. Usually, it's the bottom one in a lot of places, right? Because people are a little bit concerned, and you guys are doing very well. And if we went by the top rating, you'd be number three, you know? So you're doing very, very solidly. A great council and mayor, and I'd like you something to be grateful for, and then just keep it going, right? Keep doing the wonderful things that you are doing. So very few negatives, as mentioned. This one, I'm going to not spend too much time on, but but we asked people what kind of communications they wanted from the city. And if you look, pretty much, a lot of people want to be communicated to, and it's about everything. Like, there's not much that residents don't want to be communicated to. And there's only 8% on the left who said, I don't want to be communicated about any of these things. So in general, 90-plus percent said they do want to be communicated. And 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 a lot of things they want to be communicated about. So you're doing really well with your communications. It was rated high, and it seems like you can just keep it going, you know, and keep communicating. They love it, and they want you to do that a lot on a broad variety of topics. The town hall meetings are a little bit lower, but everything else is 50% or more. The people say, yeah, send me this information. So you're doing well. And they tend to like email. I will say, though, that the majority of the people on this survey responded. So these are email-friendly people for sure, but, you know, email's really high, and the monthly newsletter's high, and text messages and social media are high as ways of communicating. Okay, small-town feel. I'd like to talk about this very briefly. What do we do to preserve the small-town feel? Look, I thought it would be things like, hey, let's have more city events. Let's have, you know, what are the types of things that a city can do? It's really interesting to see that most of the things they want are to preserve places so that they can get out and walk about and 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 be like, go for walks with their dog or with their friends or with their with their pets or whatever, right? Or or with their kid children or whatever. They want to be able to get out. So most of them have to do with that. Protection enhancement of the river, more outdoor gathering and dining places, improved downtown walkability, and more and wider sidewalks and trails throughout the city. They're all pretty high. They're all pretty important. Additional city celebrations and festivals, some people said that, but it's number five, and it's down a bit. So you the number of festivals that you have may be adequate, but to preserve that downtown feel, just make it so that as we fill in, they can still get around, and they can still enjoy their evenings and weekends and walk around and and get out of the house and do things, right? So those are the things that they liked. I think it's a very thoughtful thing to keep an eye on as you continue. And do you have anything more to say? Do you know what? Like, anything more to say, really, they just reinforced what we already have learned. Let's be thoughtful how we develop and grow. Let's be thoughtful about, let's make sure the traffic and roads, that they work as well as we can make them work, you know, as we as we as we continue on. Just the things that we've already said. There weren't many surprises in there. But it does allow us, really, on the back end, we we have the actual comments to to look for certain things that we'd like to understand more deeply, and I won't go over it now. And that's it. That's kind of the presentation, I think. Do I have anything more? One thing, you probably have access to the dashboard already, so this is the link, which, you know, I won't show you that now. But I will entertain any of your questions or comments and and see if I can help you in any way.
Thank you, Mr. Gally. Appreciate that informative presentation. We have all access to dashboard and it's, you know, thousands of comments there, so it's certainly interesting reading. But it's great to have it all presented very clearly and efficiently here. So great news. I don't know there any, you know, real surprises in there. I think a lot of it mirrors our roadmap and which came from our citizens. So it's always good to check in with them and make sure their priorities are still our priorities and hear what they're saying. So we appreciate that. I congratulate our our city team and all the departments for their high rankings, mayor and council for their good work and and positive comments from the public and, you know, the overall direction of our city that, you know, nearly 75% of the people thinks we're moving in the right direction. It's it's great news, and it's also great to see what our citizens are concerned about so we can stay focused on 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 those issues as well. So we appreciate that information. Any questions for Mr. Gally at this time? Mr. Johnson?
Mr. Gally, thank you so much for sharing this report. Such a detailed report there. I guess the only question I had was, with all the information that was captured, was there an income component to any of the questions? Because I just wonder if that would have, if income drives some of the responses, maybe someone that's working versus a senior who's who's retired on a fixed income.
We didn't ask income. We didn't ask income. We can ask income. In some cities, we do. Some of them say, like, it's none of our business, we want to stay out of that, and they they're very sensitive to that. And so we didn't include it here, but we could in a future one, for sure, if you want to have it. And as as would be expected, those who are kind of really busy and working evenings and the kind of the working-class, lower income people, they tend to respond a little bit lower rate as well, if you wondered that. And it's true. You know, it's true. And so, you know, but but the beauty of it is, is since we go to like 1,200, 1,400 people, since we go to a lot, you can look into those specific people and see what they think. And there's enough of them so that we can understand the needs of those people quite well. So we can do that in a future survey.
Thank you.
It is great information and data that we certainly can use to do our jobs more effectively. So how does our response rate, it seems good? Does it compare to other cities?
No, on purpose, we tried to go between 1,000 and 1,500. If you do 600, you have a valid survey that you can trust. But then you can't do a deep dive on certain topics as easily. But if you have a lot more, you can. So your response rate was really is clean, very, very, very normal for what we do for a city your size. And we can get typically 10% of the adult population, but that'd be big for your city. You're a bigger city, right? So that'd be overkill, and then you it'd just swampy with comments.
Right.
That, you know, so we stop at around 1,500 maximum. And so we're in a really solid place. But I would say it's 5% of your adult population.
Yeah, great.
You know, not bad.
Thank you. Well, I I want to thank most of all our citizens and businesses who, residents who participate in the survey and gave us their information. I think we're going to be continuing to dissect this and working with our communications team to to also share these results with our citizens so they can see what the thoughts are. And we'll be looking at, I know we've already had some discussions that are retreats and all about how often we should be doing this and and getting great information to work with. So we appreciate your assistance, presentation.
Thank you all.
Thank you for joining us. So we do have two public hearings this evening before we get into our regular business meeting. And the first one is a public hearing and discussion of case CUP 2407-011, request to convert existing structure into a three-unit living facility at 570 East Main Street. Mr. Green?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of council. As you stated, this is a conditional use permit to convert an existing home at 570 East Main Street into a three-unit, a living building. Currently, there are two apartments on the ground floor, and the upper floor has been used for office space. It's my understanding that the applicant's mother has purchased the house, and it's at some point in time is looking to relocate here to Canton and live on the first floor. The office has only received one comment on this project so far, and it's from Mr. Glenn Bliss. Some of y'all, I'm sure, know Mr. Bliss. And he, at one time, had taken the house and moved it back 20 feet from the roadway and raised it another four feet to bring the house up level with the road. This took place some years ago, but he was spoke highly in favor of approval of this request. I know that Ms. Foreman is here tonight to make her presentation at the public hearing. I know that Ms. Foreman is here tonight to make her presentation at the public hearing.
Thank you, Mr. Green. And at this point, we will open the public hearing. And we asked if the applicant would like to make a presentation, please come forward, state your name and address clearly into the microphone and.
Good evening, I'm Jamie Foreman. I'm just tell you what we're trying to do.
Your address, please.
Oh, my address?
Yes.
Oh, well, where I live or this house?
Where you live.
Okay. Six forty-one Longview Drive, Canton. Thank you, sorry.
Okay.
Okay. As Mr. Green explained, it's a pretty simple transformation. The house, the main floor that's been used for office is already equipped to be a house. There's a kitchen and a bathroom and bedroom and extra room. And so there really is no other change that would be happening here except that we would be calling it residential instead of commercial. That's it.
Great.
Are there any questions?
Thank you. We'll finish the hearing and then.
Okay.
Thank you. We had no one else sign up to speak, so we will now close the public hearing and open up to council for any discussion. Questions for Mr. Green? We'll move on to the next case then. So we have public hearing and discussion of annual update to capital improvement plan and five-year short-term work plan for impact fees. Ms. Anderson, welcome.
Good evening. Every year, the city is required to submit an annual update for its impact fee program to Georgia Department of Community Affairs and the Atlanta Regional Commission. This update identifies specific projects that will be carried out over the next five years and funded by impact fees and other sources. The city's deadline to submit the update is February twenty-eighth, twenty-twenty-five. To meet this deadline, the city must hold a public hearing and pass a resolution to transmit for review and comment. Staff has advertised to hold the public hearing today. At the following meeting, a resolution to transmit will be on the agenda. Once the update has been transmitted, the state review will begin and can take up to fifty days. After the review period, the city will have to approve a review, will have to approve a resolution to adopt the update. After the adoption, an executed resolution to adopt must be submitted prior to February twenty-eighth. Failure to meet the deadline would result in the city losing its qualified local government status. Loss of this status would result in the city not being eligible for grant or funding administered through DCA or Georgia Environmental Finance Authority.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Anderson. Again, this is a routine that we're activity that we're required to do. And he, I'll now open the public hearing. Sorry, let me get ahead of myself here. We had no one sign up to speak, so we'll close the public hearing and open up to council for any questions for Ms. Anderson or discussion. Again, I think we've been through this many times. Ms. Anderson, are there any significant changes or anything from?
No, not at all.
Past plans?
Only a couple of projects fell off, but a lot of them have been extended and then there just been a couple additional projects been added.
Okay, thank you. We'll trust you to keep us on task here, so thank you. You have in your packets minutes from three meetings, our council meeting, the draft minutes, I should say, for October third, the draft minutes from our council retreat on October tenth and eleventh, and then the council draft minutes from October seventeenth meeting. Are there any changes or revisions to any of these minute minutes? And if not, is there a motion?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion.
Yes, sir.
I'd like to make to make a motion to approve the minutes as read.
Motion, is there a second?
Second.
A motion and second, all members in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay? All members voted for the motion. We have a couple of informational items this evening. These are technical reports from staff on upcoming cases. These are for information only and no discussion. And we'll begin with information only cases ANNX two-four-zero-seven-dash-zero-zero-one, RZON two-four-zero-seven-dash-zero-zero-four, MP two-four-zero-seven-dash-zero-zero-three, and CUP two-four-zero-seven-dash-zero-zero-two, request to annex, rezone, gain a conditional use permit, and master plan approval along Prominence Point Parkway for a residential development. Mr. Green?
Again, good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of council. This property is located just a little bit west of the Public Shopping Center. Some of you may recall that this acreage came up before council about two years ago for a townhome development. The applicant is now coming back on the same property, looking to develop fifty-nine single-family detached homes and sixteen townhomes. This property is fourteen-point-three-three acres, and they are asking to go from AG zoning in the county to PDR in the city of Canton. And this will come back before you in December for a public hearing item.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Green. Then item B, again, for information only, cases ANNX two-four-zero-nine-dash-zero-zero-one, RZON two-four-zero-nine-dash-zero-zero-two, and MP two-four-zero-nine-dash-zero-zero-three, request to annex, rezone, and gain master plan approval for fifty-seven-point-one-six acres located on Knox Bridge Highway for a residential development. Mr. Green?
This proposed project is lies just a little bit west of the River Green Development on Knox Bridge. The property is fifty-seven acres and it is on both sides of of Knox Bridge, on the south side and and the north side. They are asking to develop a hundred-and-seventy-one single-family detached homes with the zoning going from AG in the county to R-ten under a City of Canton zoning designation. And this item will also come back before the council in December for the.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Green. We'll have a busy December, so. Do we have any announcements this evening? Mr. Yon, I believe you had one?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to let everyone know that Councilman Waterman and I will be hosting a Ward Three Town Hall meeting on November nineteenth at six P.M. and it will be at Oakdale Baptist Church Fellowship Hall. And I want to invite particularly Ward Three citizens, but anybody, everybody from the city is welcome. We will be giving information on the city functions, the city departments, and ongoing projects that particularly affect the Ward Three area.
Great. Thank you, Mr. Yon. We look forward to that. We heard from Mr. Gailey's report that people wanted more town halls, so thank you for taking that initiative. So are there any other announcements? Hearing none, we will have now our ten-minute public input. We had one resident sign up, Mr. Thomas Weaver.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of council. For the benefit for all whom are in attendance, my name is Thomas Weaver and I reside at one-thirty-one Old Marietta Road, Canton, Georgia. Thank you for recognizing me to speak, Mr. Mayor, council, and audience. The voters have spoke. They spoke loudly. So did the Georgia electorate. They said they want tax reform and they want tax relief. And now this council is going to be saddled with having to wrestle with the implications of H.R. ten-twenty-two between now and early spring. I know that the fiscal responsibility and strong conservative leadership of this mayor and council in managing every penny of public funds that your constituents entrust you is beyond reproach. I commend and applaud you, and I know that every dollar is accounted for and is fully transparent, arguably even more so than neighboring governmental units. However, the legislature chose, for whatever reason, to leave open the opportunity for this mayor and council to opt out of the of the incentive that was built into the constitutional amendment for the for the benefit of the constituency, all of your constituents. And I would ask that you even urge you to employ due consideration and avoid the temptation of electing to move forward with the opt-out provision, not to steal anyone's thunder, but H.R. ten-twenty-two does have very serious implications for people's wallets and pocketbooks. And it's the largest gripe. People don't come up here and they complain about their sales taxes. I don't hear it. But that dreaded property tax bill, that annual bill, now finally, the electorate has said it has to be linked to the CPI. This is the answer to the great what-about-me question. Our seniors benefit from generous exemptions that's been built into our charter as approved by the legislature. I know that the fiscal challenges for the city moving forward are enormous, fire, water, sewer, infrastructure, et cetera. However, I would caution the mayor and council to heed the warning of the voters. At least, the General Assembly get even more strict based on what we saw occur last night and padded new majorities that would further limit council's ability to impose taxation or collect taxation moving forward. I don't have a magic crystal ball, I don't know what the future session holds, but I'm asking this mayor and council to employ due diligence and answer the question, the what-about-me, council hears you, will opt in, at least I hope. I don't make that decision, but, Mr. Mayor, members of council, thank you for recognizing me to speak.
Thank you, Mr. Weaver. Now, we have one item of old business to attend to, and there's discussion and possible action on annexation ANNX two-four-zero-three-dash-zero-zero-one, rezoning RZON two-four-zero-three-dash-zero-zero-two, master plan MP two-four-zero-five-dash-zero-zero-five, and conditional use permit CUP two-four-zero-four-dash-zero-zero-two, request submitted by P Ridge Land Investments LLC for the development of a residential community and small retail center. Mr. Green?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. As you stated, these applications are for an annexation, rezoning, master plan, and a conditional use permit for a property located in the P Ridge area. The first item that would need to be addressed would be the annexation.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Green. So again, we've had our public hearings, we've heard from from residents, both the city and the county, on this. I know we've discussed it a lot. As Mr. Green mentioned, first item to be addressed here would be annexation because that would inform our further discussions or any possible actions. So do we have any any motions on the annexation request?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion.
Yes, sir.
Regarding annexation ANNX two-four-zero-three-dash-zero-zero-one, I'd like to make a motion to deny the annexation.
Okay.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. And no reaction from the audience, please. Thank you. Any discussion? If not, we have a motion to deny the annexation. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Aye.
So let's just official, let's do a roll call vote just for the record there. And we'll start with Mr. Yon.
Nay.
Nay. Mr. Tolan?
Aye.
Aye. Ms. McGrew?
Aye.
Mr. Waterman?
Nay.
Nay? Okay. Mr. Roach?
Nay.
Nay? And Mr. Johnson?
Aye.
Aye. So if I've recorded that correctly, we have three motions to deny, not three votes to deny the annexation and three votes to approve the, to against the motion to not deny. Is that correct? Did I record everyone's vote correctly? Okay. That leaves the mayor with a rare opportunity to vote in a in in a case, and the mayor votes to deny the annexation, so annexation is denied. Mr. Dyer, I believe we do need to address.
Yeah, because some of the property involved is already in the city. You would formally deny the zoning for that, presumably.
Okay. I believe that's the seven-point-two acres or something. So we just need to send our motion to deny the rezoning on that city property.
Correct.
Okay. Do we have any motions?
I make a motion to deny the rezoning of the property mentioned.
Motion, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, a motion and a second to deny the rezoning. All in favor? Well, let's do a roll call of vote again, just to be consistent. Mr. Yon?
Nay.
Okay. Mr. Tolan?
Aye.
Ms. McGrew?
Aye.
Mr. Waterman?
Mr. Roach?
Nay.
Nay.
Mr. Johnson?
Aye.
Again, we have a tied vote on there. The mayor votes to deny the rezoning as well, so rezoning is denied. Okay. I believe that's all we have to vote on those issues now. Is that correct, Mr. Dyer?
Yes.
Okay. So we'll move into our new business portion now, and there's item A, discussion and possible approval of Fox Theater Preservation Grant Award Contract. Ms. Norton?
Good evening. As you're aware, we have been working on a theater exterior renovation project that involves exterior paint. It involves getting our lighted signs back in working order. It involves a decorative element to better incorporate the digital marquees into the historic look. We applied for a grant from Fox Gives, which is the giving arm of the Fox Theater in Atlanta, Georgia, and we've been awarded a twenty-thousand-dollar preservation grant to go towards this project. So tonight, I have for you the possible approval of the contract with the Fox Theater and authorization for the mayor to sign that on the city's behalf. So I'm happy to answer any questions that you have about the project or the contract.
Thank you, Ms. Norton. It's exciting for us, and we're always happy to accept money from other people, especially for this great project. So are there any questions for Ms. Ms. Norton on this? And I believe you would like action this evening, is that correct?
If possible.
Okay. Ms. McGrew?
I'd like to make a motion to approve the, to seek the grant, or is it the mayor to sign?
This is just a motion to approve the contract.
Motion to approve the contract for the grant from the Fox Theater.
Second.
A motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay? All members voted for the motion.
Thank you.
Item, thank you. Item B, discussion and possible action on public safety building upgrades. I believe Mr. The chief is 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 not with us tonight, but.
He's not, but the deputy chief's here, I guess, if you have any questions.
Welcome, Deputy Chief.
Good evening.
Great to see you.
We're just requesting these funds for updating the main floor of the police department, painting, carpeting, and electrical work. Just using for the impact fees.
And I believe this is on the second floor, I think, which is.
Main floor.
Currently unoccupied, so the.
Unoccupied due to the updating with the construction of the HVAC and heating and cooling and plus the flood. So we'd like to use this opportunity to do all those repairs and updates at this time that we can move everybody back into their office.
Okay. Awesome, thank you. Any questions or discussion?
Do we need to count this as a kind of emergency or urgent or is just? No, there's no.
Okay. Mr. Waterman?
I'd like to make a motion to approve the public safety building upgrades.
Okay, a motion?
Second.
And a second? Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay? All members voted for the motion.
Thank you, Mayor, council.
Item C was withdrawn by the applicant, so we'll move on to item D, discussion of personal property auction contract with Jeff Dobson and Associates for disposition of certain firearm items via auction. Mr. Ingram?
Good evening, Mayor and council. Each year, as we do each, we do every year, there are a number of assets that the city owns that have to be disposed of. They've reached the end of their useful life, they're no longer needed. Or in this particular case, the court has adjudicated some firearms and now requires us to dispose of those firearms. You have in front of you. You have in front of you an agreement between the city and Jeff Dobson and Associates, the auctioneer. I just want to point out that auctioneer is who the city and the county has worked with over the past number of years to auction our equipment and our vehicles in the spring, same auctioneer. But now that we come to you tonight to get approval to auction approximately 70 to 80 firearms that again have been adjudicated by the court system to be disposed of. Also, you know, we will have additional equipment, assets in the future. So this contract is going to come, it's going to cover those vehicles and equipment that will come in the spring. We'll bring those to you to get approval as well. Just let you know, this contract will cover all of it. So if you have any questions, I'd be more than happy to get a response from the police department if, if we can't get a response to tonight, and we're going to ask for action on that in two weeks.
Okay. Mr. Ingram, any questions for Mr. Ingram? Okay, thanks, sir.
Thank you.
Item E, discussion of deeding the downtown fire station property to the Downtown Development Authority, DDA, and a proposed intergovernmental agreement, IGA, with the DDA for the redevelopment of the downtown fire station property. Mr. Ingram?
The county approached the city a while back and expressed the desire to renovate the downtown fire station for fire service use. Its management, its management's recommendation that the Downtown Development Authority be used to manage this redevelopment project. The county appears amenable to use sea fire impact fees to complete this project. As a matter of fact, right now, they, I think they have approximately $2 million to contribute toward the commencement of this project immediately. And we'll set up some, an agreement with the DDA to manage that between, with the county. And we will use future impact fees over the next 10 years to cover what we estimate now to be the additional approximately $3 million fees. So it will come from hopefully solely impact fees. There is a possibility we could use some tax allocation, allocation district funds for any additional items, you know, especially as it relates to infrastructure. Going forward, an IGA will be set up between the county and the DDA, as I just mentioned. It will allow the renovation, construction process, and call for use of the future fire impact fees to cover the cost. And considering that TAD funding may also be used and the city has provided for the DDA to manage various TAD projects, it would be advantageous for the DDA to oversee this project. So we are going to ask for council's consideration to take action in two weeks on this. But that being said, if it, if it's the council's interest to go ahead and take action, we can go ahead and get started on that, but we're not asking for action tonight. We will ask for action in two weeks.
Okay, and just to confirm, the city retains ownership of the property, correct?
The city will retain ownership through the DDA. Because that is one, I've provided a copy of a warranty deed that Mr. Dyer prepared for us that will transfer technical ownership of that property to the DDA. And then I also provided a copy of the, an IGA with the DDA that the city would enter into to facilitate that project.
Thank you. Any questions for Mr. Ingram? I know we've talked about this for a while. I know for, for a while, the, the fire, Cherokee County Fire and Emergency Services was looking for another location, but they've decided that this location will serve them well with some renovations. And so we're, we're happy to keep that fire station downtown, so.
Thank you.
Item F, discussion of a resolution of funding to provide additional funding for Canton's Main Street program and Canton's sanitation fund. Mr. Ingram?
Yes, sir, Mayor. Here probably in about January or February, we'll provide the mayor and council with an end of the year amendment. This is for fiscal year '24, that ended September 30th of this year, earlier this year. But until then, we have some additional hotel motel tax funds that we need to get expended, allocated and expended for the fiscal year '24 that just ended. Right now, we believe we can contribute an additional $50,000 to the Main Street program as well as we want to contribute some funds from the general fund to the sanitation fund in the amount of $150,000 to cover their expenses. If you recall, the sanitation fund, the monies that we collect from those franchise, sanitation franchise fees covers the cost of our roll-off site. It not always covers 100% of those costs. So we're always kind of left with this residual amount. And we bring to council each January, February, an amendment that covers those fees. But we would like to go ahead and contribute, go ahead and move those funds. So tonight, we're asking for a resolution, or let me correct myself, two weeks. We'll ask for a resolution, council will approve a resolution to move those funds. But I just want to make you aware that the amendment will not come until. We will actually make the amendment. So we want to get a resolution before we actually do that, that really gives us the formal permission to do, to move those funds.
Thank you, Mr. Ingram, any questions? Item G, discussion of resolution to authorize check signers for the city of Canton bank account. Mr. Ingram, your work?
Yes, sir.
Earning your keep tonight, so.
As mayor and council is aware, with one of our check signers recently resigning, we have a limited number of individuals at City Hall right now that can, that can sign the actual paper checks. As a matter of fact, right now, there's basically three of us. Two of us in City Hall and Ms. Fitz over at the Public Safety Building. So obviously, if any two of us are out at the same time on vacation, PTO, what have you, then there is, there's no way to get a third, I mean, a second signature on one of those checks. We're asking that council consider adding Ms. Donna Bell as one of the signers on our checking accounts. Ms. Bell, she has been with the city for over 15 years, over 16 years, excuse me. And she's been a valuable member of the team, a very trusted member of the team, a very important member of the team, as, as we all are. So we would ask that council entertain a motion to approve adding Ms. Donna Bell to the list of signature authorities on the city's bank account. And we do, we are asking for action on that if possible tonight, so that we can get that moving forward. Because I know that the bank, Sanova's Bank, our local bank, they have, they have to send out signature cards to get it signed. And it usually takes a couple of weeks, a week or two to get that processed. So the sooner we can do that, we would mitigate the chance of any, you know, unforeseen situation occurring where we only have one signer and need to get a check.
Okay. Any questions from Mr. Ingram or any motions?
If there are no questions, I'd like to make a motion to pass a resolution to add Donna Bell as a signator on the city's bank account. Second.
We have a motion and a second, any further discussion? All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, nay? All members voted for the motion.
Thank you, Mayor, Council.
So item H, discussion of board vacancies for 2025. Ms. Fortner?
If it's okay, may I remain up here?
Yes, please.
Thank you. Several of the city's boards, commissions, and authorities have. As well as a couple of current vacancies included in your packets. I provided a list of each of those boards with, um, uh, members whose terms will be expiring as long as, as well as who nominates those members and the length of their terms. If possible, the staff's goal to have these vacancies filled by December 19th.
Okay. So that is our goal to have all the board vacancies filled by December 19th. And again, you have your responsibility, is it, it is your responsibility for your ward or your appointee. But let's try to get those nominations in. Again, in the next couple of meetings, but with a goal to, to have new members in place to approve as a slate on December 19th. Any questions? Awesome. And item I, discussion of 2025 council meeting calendar. Ms. Fortner?
Yes, me again. Council adopts a meeting calendar each year attached in your packet. Are the proposed meeting dates for 2025? There is one meeting date that does coincide with a holiday, which is June 19th. I will note in this past year, council only held one meeting in June due to the annual GMA convention. I did look up the convention dates for this coming June, which they are June 20th through the 24th. And I believe that, you know, several council members will have classes on that 20th. So they would be traveling on the 19th as well. But that said, you can consider having one meeting in June again. Or you could move the meeting back or ahead one week, or push it to the Wednesday, the 18th. That's, that's the only date that, that has a conflict.
Thank you, Ms. Fortner. I believe and I know with the GMA starting on the 20th, and I think, believe that first class starts at eight, eight or eight thirty. So I think that was part of the decision last year. And I know that Juneteenth is a, both a, a city national federal holiday, so the city hall will be closed. So if, if council is okay of just holding the one meeting in, in June of 2025, seemed to work okay this. We'll work a little harder in July, but if we can publish that ahead of time, then we can, staff can prepare accordingly. So any questions or concerns with that? Are we good with the rest of the calendar? All right. Mr. Peppers?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I did want to take a moment to introduce a new staff member that we have with us today. Ms. Andi Leslie, who is our new Economic Development Manager. She joined us on Wednesday, and so this is her second day on the job. And she's already enjoying a city council meeting. And she's gotten to meet a lot of people over the last two days. We're very excited about having her join us. She joins us from the city of Rome, has worked with the Small Business Development Center, the city of Carrollton. So we're excited to have her here tonight with us and, and working with our team. And I'm sure she will have agenda items to bring to you at some point in the near future. And we'll get a chance to, to hear from her directly at the meeting. But if you get a chance, please make her feel welcome. If you've noticed, we've started putting up holiday decorations around downtown. It takes a while, and we try to get them up when the weather's dry. So Public Works will be working over the next couple of weeks to get those out ahead of the Thanksgiving holiday. I would like to report that, you know, once again, City Hall served as a voting precinct. We did not have any major issues in our precinct or in the city. I really want to thank our police department for the hard work that they did patrolling the precincts around the city. Public Works and code enforcement also did a good job to make sure that signs that were illegally placed in right of way were taken up, and those that were left behind were also grabbed, so that, so that our streets and everything were clean around the city. Lastly, I would like to note to you that over the next few meetings in January, December and January, we will be updating some intergovernmental agreements that we have with Cherokee County. Those are agreements that we have that are part of service delivery strategy where perhaps when they were originally adopted, they had an end date based upon a number of years. Mr. Morton, the county manager, started sending a few of those over to us so that we can start getting those scheduled. And all of the intergovernmental agreements that are coming from the county now have an end date of June of 2028 to coincide with the current service delivery strategy. So at the next meeting, you will be receiving two specific ones. And those are based upon a change that are based upon an election. So we have a new county magistrate that starts January 1. The city utilizes the magistrate for animal control violations and citations. We also utilize the magistrate's office for first appearance hearings for individuals who might be sent to jail related to a city ordinance violation. They have to have a hearing within so many hours of being incarcerated. So the county magistrate's office takes care of those for us. But with a new magistrate, the county would like to get all of those documents signed by both the city and the county, so that on January 1, when the new magistrate is sworn in, he can execute the documents, and they can take place immediately. So we'll be bringing those to you first out of that group. Also, the other night, as you know, there were, um, the amendment on property assessment caps was approved statewide. We had a conversation with the mayor about this. We, as a city, as the county seat, will be sending out a letter to the county commission as well as all the other cities in Cherokee County to find out about the interest in the second part of that, which was a floating local sales tax. Because there's a couple of major pieces to that. The first is if the city's going to opt out, which I haven't heard any discussion of. There are some public hearing processes that have to take place with that. We actually had a luncheon yesterday with the other city and county, city managers and the county manager. I don't think anybody's going to go that route. But, um, but the second piece of that is that floating local option sales tax. The only way the sales tax can take place as a referendum is if the county and the municipalities representing at least 50% of the municipal population sign on. So in that case, it would have to be Woodstock or Canton and Holly Springs to, to at least make the 50% based upon our municipal population. So in speaking with the mayor, we'll be sending a letter to those elected officials of the county and the other cities just to try to pull together a group, have a discussion to see what the, what the thought process is on that. Because to call for a referendum, we will have to get an intergovernmental agreement. We will have to get the legislative delegation to sign on to that, approve it as a local act, and then place it on referendum for a ballot. I did find out that there is going to be a county or statewide election next year for a public service commissioner seat in November. Traditionally, in odd years, we have our city council elections. There's not a county or state election, but in this case, there already will be one scheduled. And so if there was the idea that you were going to do a sales tax referendum, having it on that general election calendar is better for everybody. But that'll be a conversation that we can have once we hear from some of the other cities and counties. Our pavement management crew, who's been working our contract between us and the county, have completed all the striping work with that. I did have a conversation with the county manager yesterday, and he anticipates once again moving forward with a joint contract for paving services in Cherokee County. So we'll start talking about that probably in December and start putting that together with the idea that it would go out to bid and probably get approved in late February or March. I'm happy to answer any questions you might have.
Any questions for Mr. Peppers? Good well, thank you. We have any council introduce items, just double checking? A couple, I want to welcome Ms. Leslie, and we look forward to working with you. And just to let you know, if you haven't heard already, our citizens would love that Trader Joe's here, so. It'd be a big win, so. I also would actually like to ask our city manager to, um, to talk to the county and discuss a potential summit, meeting between the city and the county and the community of P Ridge to discuss how we can work together to address some of the issues there of the, the P Ridge community in its entirety. It's certainly very important to all of us. And I know some issues came up here during the recent annexation request. And I think there are a lot of issues we can talk about. We'd love to engage the community and, and look and see what strategies we can do to, to improve the community for, for, for all the residents who live there. I know that Mr. Peppers and I had, had an opportunity to, to visit at the Charlie Ferguson Center. And Ms. Welch who invited us, and we appreciate that. We talked a little bit about some annexation issues, some historic issues there. So I think that was a, a good start to the conversation. And I think it'd be in all our best intentions to talk how we all work together to improve the community for, for everyone. So if we could see what steps can be taken to bring everyone together and let's come up with a great strategy in support of, of moving forward in, in that area, so. That's all I have this evening. At this point, I will entertain a motion to adjourn to executive session to discuss real estate and litigation.
Move to adjourn to executive session? Second.
A motion and a second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay? All members voted for the motion. Thank you.
What are we talking?